I'd like to call the November 28, 2018 Board Meeting to order and remind everyone to please use your microphones when speaking and turn them off when you're finished. Thank you. Commissioners present are Commissioner James Dome, Commissioner James Duggan, myself, Bernice Bagnall, Commissioner Dick Schmidt, and Commissioner Todd Sanders. We will next move into reports by the CEO and management staff.
Good evening, President Bagnall, members of the Board. We thought we'd switch things up a little bit and start the CEO report from down here, which will become entirely obvious as to why we're doing that in just a minute. But we will kick things off the way we always do with a safety moment. And Paul Matthews, our CFO, will give the safety moment this evening. Paul?
Thank you, Mark. For tonight's safety moment, I want to talk about medication safety, something that I haven't paid a lot of attention to myself until recently, seeing a flyer in our restroom, and it brought it to my attention. Couple of interesting facts to know. Eighty-two percent of Americans take at least one medication and 25% take five or more. That really did surprise me. Adverse drug events, which is what they describe these as, caused about 1.3 million emergency room or emergency department visits each year and about 350,000 hospitalizations. This is pretty significant. $3.5 billion is spent annually on excess medical costs because of these adverse drug events. And more than 40% of the cost related to ambulatory, that is, the non-hospital ADEs, might be preventable. So with that, we think this is likely to grow in the future. Couple of trends that will cause us to likely see more AEDs. First, the development of new medicines. We're seeing more medical treatment based on pharmaceuticals. We'll continue to see more AEDs as they roll out. We're also discovering new uses for older medicines. So the total stock, the amount of medication out there is growing. The American population is aging, and as we age, our likelihood of taking multiple medicines increases as well. There's an increased use of medicine to treat diseases as well as the prevention of those diseases. And there's been an expansion of insurance coverage for prescription medicines. Taken together, we're likely to see an increase in ADEs in the future. One of those is when food and drugs interact together and cause that adverse effect. If you're taking any of these drugs, you should pay particular attention: blood thinners, diabetic drugs, antiseizure medicine, asthma medication, cardiac drugs, pain medicines, statins for cholesterol, or antibiotics. What can we do about this? Are there some measures that we can take to increase prescription drug safety? Couple of things. First, bring a detailed list of all the drugs and supplements that you take when you meet with your doctor or medical professional. Ask your doctor and your pharmacist if you're taking drugs that might put you at greater risk of a food-drug interaction. Always read the labels and follow the directions. Never change the dosage from the dosage given to you by your medical professional. Always stick with that dosage. Here's one that I didn't think of, but always have the lights on when you're taking medications. It's actually easy to confuse drugs in the dark. Never take anyone else's prescription. Another one that makes sense is to store medicines in the original containers away from food and household chemicals. And keep medicines out of reach of children and ensure the cap is tightly fashioned. So with that, play it safe. Know your drugs and know the dangers. If you do inadvertently have an overdose, dial 911, or if you have the ability to remember a longer number than that, you can go with the 800 number. I would just go with 911 personally. With that, that concludes the safety moment.
Excuse me. Aren't getting rid of drugs? I use our wood stove. It's got a catalytic converter in it and 1,700 degrees. Nothing is going to escape. And it's gone. There you go.
The important piece of that is don't flush it down the toilet. All right. With that, a couple of updates this month. First of all, talking about Portland water quality. Portland Water Bureau has reported that on November 11th and November 19th of this month, they detected one cryptosporidium oocyst in water samples from the Bull Run intake. These are the first positive cryptosporidium samples in about a month. And as a result of those detections, Portland has increased their cryptosporidium monitoring to four times per week. They will continue to do that until they have at least three weeks without any detections in their source water. Rather than go into all the details, I would just simply refer customers to Portland's website for their cryptosporidium results. Related to the Willamette Water Supply Program, we have some very exciting news related to what's called a 404 permit. Earlier this month, we learned that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is ready to issue what's known as a fill-and-removal permit for construction of the Willamette Water Supply System. This permit is required under Section 404 of the Clean Water Act, and obtaining this permit has been a major accomplishment. It's truly been years in the making in terms of the team that has been working on this and is a major milestone in successful implementation of the Willamette Water Supply. The supply program team has provided a few very limited comments on the final draft permit language, and we've now heard back from the Corps, and they basically agreed with those refinements and tweaks. And so I am told that literally any day now, I should be asked to be signing the final permit. So it's a major step forward for the program. Finally, the reason that we're up here in the team presentation is that rather than providing a typical department report, as we do most months, I thought it'd be appropriate that we provide a presentation related to a recent announcement that the US EPA made that TBWD and Hillsborough have been selected by US EPA to apply for a $617 million low-interest loan for the Willamette Water Supply Program. So joining me this evening is Paul Matthews, our CFO, who will be talking a little bit about the details associated with this funding program called WIFIA. And then we also have Andrea Watson, our Communications and Public Affairs Supervisor, who will be talking about how we do outreach. But first, I thought I'd provide a little bit of background in terms of this mystery acronym known as WIFIA. What is WIFIA? So it is the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act of 2014, a wonderful federal program name. It is a federal loan program. Paul cringes whenever we call it a loan program because it's actually credit assistance, I think is a better characterization of it. But again, it's administered by the US EPA, and it's really targeted towards water and wastewater infrastructure projects. The goal of EPA is basically accelerate investment in water and wastewater infrastructure. And so in our case, it's going to allow that to happen. Basically, back in July, TBWD and Hillsborough submitted a joint letter of interest. You know, you would think a letter of interest is a couple of pages long. This was 50 pages long. It looks a lot more like an application than it does a letter of interest, but EPA calls it a letter of interest. And we requested $587 million of funding for the Willamette Water Supply System. At the time, we were one of 62 letters of interest that were submitted nationwide in 2018. The good news is that in late October, we learned that we had been selected to submit a final application. Now, that sounds like there's still more steps, and there are. But the really good news is that you don't get selected unless there is an intention on the part of US EPA to fund your project. And so while it's not a guarantee, we still need to go through the application process. We wouldn't be having this conversation had we not been selected. And so we're really enthused about the opportunity to be able to submit this application. But the interesting piece was not only were we selected, but the EPA came back with a suggestion that we would be eligible, that project expenses would be eligible up to $1,616 million, so actually about $30 million more than we originally asked for. The piece that's challenging is now we have to submit our final application within a year of that notification. So we have up until October of 2019 to submit the final application. So I wanted to spend just a minute and kind of boast a little bit in terms of how it is that we got to this point, because this was no small accomplishment. To me, it's a reflection of TBWD's long-term commitment to quality, both in terms of the quality of the organization, quality of our investments, and quality of our partnerships. To spend just a minute talking about each one of those, frankly, it really starts with you, the Board. You provided the visionary leadership that we needed to be able to move forward with the Willamette Water Supply Program. You were the ones that told us, "Go forth and make this happen." And so we've been doing the work to make that happen, but it never would have happened without you saying, "Go make it happen." The professionalism of the staff is second to none. As I had mentioned to you earlier, the fact of the matter is, we had a remarkable team working on this. This was a very collaborative effort to pull this letter of interest together. It was finance, it was engineering, it was the supply program team. We also used a consultant to help us put together a very polished package. All of that kind of effort really made a difference. But I think it's also a reflection of the fact that TBWD is recognized nationally as a leader in the water industry. And that's only been possible because, again, you've helped support the organization in making our presence known on the national stage. In terms of quality of investments, one of the things that was quite clear is the value of the long-term planning. Now, we can talk about short-term plans in terms of master plans, but the fact of the matter is, we owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to my predecessor's predecessor's predecessor, who basically secured the water right on the Willamette in 1973, that basically we had the opportunity to then be able to begin to move forward and realize that vision that was created so many years ago. It also is tied to a commitment that we've had to reliability. The Board has always been clear that we need to have multiple sources of supply, and this is just really an extension of that whole concept of providing an independent, reliable source of supply. But of course, we amped it up, and we really upped our game on this particular case by making sure that that new source of supply was designed to withstand a magnitude-nine earthquake, the kind of design criteria that essentially no water system has done previously. And to me, that's tremendously exciting to have, know that certainty that that water system will be there when we need it. And last, that we have been leaders in innovation, frankly, in terms of the kind of work that we do, the nature of the projects, our design standards that we're using, all are truly innovative in terms of how the water supply is coming together. And then last but not least is the quality of partnerships. Again, this wouldn't have happened had we not had the support of the Oregon Congressional delegation, particularly Senator Jeff Merkley, who really ramrodded the efforts necessary to be able to create the WIFIA program in 2014. Regional leadership. We are regional leaders in every respect, both in terms of our presence in the Portland region, Commissioner Duggan's role and his role in the Regional Water Providers Consortium. We've all been actively involved in various capacities, and frankly, again, that really set the stage for recognizing that we were leaders that could deliver this kind of program. And last but not least is our awesome partner and partnership that we have with the city of Hillsborough, who is a 40% partner in this program, and they too will realize the benefits of WIFIA through this. So we did a lot of work. We put together this letter of interest, and the feedback that we got from the US EPA was very gratifying. Paul tells me that the individual that he talked to, that we ultimately got the news from, acknowledged that the TBWD Hillsborough letter of interest was one of the best letters of interest they had received, period, and it was clearly of application quality, and they truly appreciated the work that went into it. So why are we so enthused about this whole thing? Well, the fact of the matter is, it has some repayment terms that are frankly very beneficial to us as water providers. First of all, it is intended to serve large programs, and the minimum size of project that can be funded through WIFIA is $20 million. Now, we obviously eclipsed that in a big way, but the fact of the matter is, it is geared towards large programs. Up to 49% of the program would be eligible for costs funded by WIFIA. Now, if we got other federal money, and right now, we're not planning on other federal money, but if we did, we could get total federal assistance up to 80%. Here's the real beauty of the WIFIA program, is repayment terms of up to 35 years, and that's, first of all, fairly long in and of itself, but here's the real clincher: after substantial completion. In our case, substantial completion is in 2026, so we actually don't have, we have that additional period during construction where we're not really in a position to need to repay this loan. And wait, wait, there's more. The fact of the matter is that part of WIFIA includes an opportunity, and it's up to us in terms of how we structure the final application, to defer that repayment for an additional five years after substantial completion. So theoretically, this could be a loan up to a total of 40 years after substantial completion, which is, in our case, what, seven years from now? So theoretically, up to 47 years. Am I doing that right? Almost.
Almost. I think it's 35 plus.
35 plus. And one other significant benefit is that it's at an interest rate that is essentially at the U.S. Treasury rate. So we don't have to pay a commercial rate. We don't have to pay all of the costs associated with going out and selling debt. We have the opportunity to essentially wind up doing this at a U.S. Treasury rate. So great benefits. So Paul is going to take it over and give you the real straight scoop in terms of why this truly benefits TBWD.
Thank you, Mark. And as Mark indicated, the fixed interest rate is actually a key element of this. It's tied to the U.S. government's interest rate, and I just looked it up yesterday. It was 3.32%. Looked it up again today, and it's still at 3.2%. What that means, though, is that the time that we close on the loan, the interest rate is fixed. We can close on the loan within, let's say, a year's time. That interest rate is fixed for the entire length of the loan. With conventional municipal financing, we would go out for bond issues, and we'd have interest rate risk. Each year, an interest rate would be established by the market much higher than that, and that'd bring more risk into the program. So having that fixed interest rate at closing is a huge benefit to TBWD. Secondly, is that there's no penalty for prepayment. This is becoming more of an issue. There are some technical things that happen with the tax reform bill that makes it more difficult for utilities like us to do what's called an advance refunding. Having said that, no penalty for prepayment would allow us, if we wanted to, to actually pay the loan off and realize additional interest savings. As Mark indicated, the 35-year repayment with up to five years' deferral from the date of project substantial completion. That's a critical thing. What this allows us to do is to lock in the money, to be able to say to the rest of the bond market that we'll be borrowing from, "Here's money that we have to fund the program." We draw on that money as we spend the money on the program, and that allows us to essentially do all the cash flow with that loan in place. We don't take all the money at once, for example, and start paying interest on it. We only pay interest on the amount that we take each step of the way. And the interest payments actually can be deferred too until after substantial completion of the project. The bottom line, as it results in significant savings to the TBWD ratepayers, we estimated, as we were putting together the LOI, that between 2020 and 2045, it'd result in $231 million of savings just for our customers. That's a huge amount of money, and that really helps as we're trying to build this really important water supply program. So where are we? We just completed Phase 1. The WIFIA process occurs in two phases. The first phase is the project selection phase, and that's where our project was selected. It starts, though, back in April, when the EPA issued what's called a NOFA, or their Notice of Funding Availability. Once Congress appropriated money for the WIFIA program to pay for what's called the credit subsidy, the WIFIA program was able to release the NOFA, and that's when they got the 62 letters of interest, which were due on July 30. We submitted our letter of interest about a week before it was due, back in July. The WIFIA team then went through a process of evaluating those letters of interest. Our assumption was that, given that the EPA intends to fund the loans for those people that are selecting, that the LOI isn't just kind of a casual, "Hey, we'd like to participate in the program." We had to provide substantial documentation so they could see we had the ability to complete the program, that the program is technically feasible, that it can be done within the timelines that we had suggested, and that we had the financial capability of funding it. So it was important to present all those things to the EPA. That resulted in the project selection, and we actually got a phone call from the WIFIA person that we're going to be working with, and I was driving down the road when the call came, and my cellphone, so a little animation there, I was jumping for joy because this really does have a significant...
While you were driving?
You know, I don't text and drive. I don't jump, but yeah, I was pretty happy. But now, the hard work continues, and that is, we're moving into Phase 2. And that's, again, when the EPA has finished Phase 1, they've selected the project, they've identified how they're going to spend that congressional appropriations, and now we need to fulfill the requirements that will be, let me walk through each one of these here. But before we get there, I want to talk a little bit about what the project selection phase is, that first phase is and what it is not. First, it is the point at which the appropriation from Congress is allocated to each of the projects. So they've taken out of the amount of money that Congress allocated, and they've set aside an amount for the Willamette Water Supply Program to fund what's called the credit subsidy. And that's done, and that money's accounted for. They determined the projects that they're going to move ahead with, and thankfully, ours was one of those. And they identify the projects that EPA believes, and this is their words, "has a reasonable likelihood of receiving a WIFIA loan." Basically, if you're at this point and you're selected, they're going to fund your loan. But here's what it doesn't do. It doesn't indicate that the EPA has accepted our terms that we put in the LOI. That still needs to be negotiated. We described the kind of loan we would want and some of the terms that we would like. That still needs to be agreed to. And it doesn't confirm the sufficiency or fulsomeness, which was their word, and I thought we were going to take that one out, of the information provided in the LOI. Folsomeness, I'm not exactly sure what they meant by that, but basically, what we presented in our LOI needs to be verified. So now, we're at Phase 2. What happens next? The application, as we indicated, we have 365 days to submit it from the date that we received the letter, and that letter was dated October 30. So we'll be working on that, submitting the application as soon as possible. We'd like to submit the application as soon as possible so we can close as soon as possible and lock in those interest rates. Once we submit our application, it takes the EPA about 30 to 90 days to evaluate their application. They will actually hire an engineering group, they'll hire some legal folks, as well as some financial folks to go over our application to make sure it passes muster. Then we'll develop term sheets with the EPA, and that takes between 60 and 180 days. The application approval, it takes about a month to do that, and then final negotiation, 60, 90 days, and then we get to closing. If everything goes right, we can be doing this in about a year's time. Current activities that we have, first, we're going to be updating the district's financial plan to reflect the new WWSS cost shares, the Willamette Water Supply cost shares, based on the amount of water that TBWD is now committed to taking. And we'll be doing that as soon as the program's new baseline budget is available. We'll be talking to you at the work session next month, next work session, about our financial management policies. We'll need to get some financial management policies in place to facilitate the WIFIA loan. We'll need to prepare our master declaration, which are the details of how we're going to borrow our conventional municipal debt, and our WIFIA loan will be based on those same master declaration. Some future activities, we'll prepare and submit the WIFIA application. We'll need to submit a deposit of $100,000, which will cover part of what they call the credit processing fee. That's to pay for the EPA experts that look over our application. We'll need to apply for and submit one preliminary letter of credit from one of the credit rating agencies, S&amp;P Moody's, Fitch. We'll need to address EPA's questions that they have during the evaluation process. And then the final activities, we'll negotiate the terms of the loan agreement, we'll go to close, and then we'll be required to submit two final letters from rating agencies. In addition to that, there's some things that we're going to have to be doing internally to get ourselves prepared. On the accounting side, we're going to have to implement new accounting processes to substantiate the payments. So we're going to have to be applying for payments from the EPA for two partners, City Hillsborough and Tuauta Valley Water District. All those things are going to need to be tracked, and there'll have to be some new accounting processes put in place. We'll be subject to a single audit standard, so tonight, our auditor's going to come in. That task may be a little bit more complicated in the future. We'll need to revise our indirect cost allocation plan, which is how we allocate our overhead costs to capital projects. We've been working on that. The good news is, we've been working on that over the past, prior to getting notification on WIFIA, but we'll need to complete that work as well. And we'll need to update our chart of accounts to address some of these accounting requirements that we have. In addition to that, we'll have some compliance requirements. So we need to comply with all the environmental crosscutters that are in place, and the program will take care of that. In Oregon, we're subject to Davis Bacon wage requirements, but we'll have to separately substantiate that to the EPA, not just to the Bureau of Labor and Industries, but also to EPA that we've met those requirements. And of course, we'll have to meet the American Iron and Steel Act.
So simultaneous to all this work, we want to make sure that we have a communication strategy in place because this does benefit our ratepayers, and we are also, just in general, trying to help raise their awareness about the program and what it means for their future water supply. So we are focusing on these strategies, one, acknowledging the contributors, and you see an item before you tonight, to really recognize those Oregon congressional delegates who helped form the WIFIA program and also did letters of support, as well as people who worked on the letter of interest. And we want to continue to do our work around strengthening our partnerships, making sure that we are minding that as we go forward, and also to use all of our available channels to inform internal and external audiences. So we're going to start right away in Water Words, the insert that goes into bills, sharing this information, and we will continue to do that. We did a little bit of it today with the Rotary Group, so we'll work that into our presentations and all of the channels that we use to communicate with our internal and external audiences.
With that, we'd be happy to field any questions related to WIFIA or the CEO's staff report this evening.
I did have one question. Did they explain why, when we applied for $587 million, they came back with $617 million?
No, but I have a theory as to why they did that. As we were preparing for the loan, there are a couple of things that we put in the loan application. We wanted to hedge against the idea that maybe we could be disqualified because of the American Iron and Steel Act. So we had voluntarily taken some spend out of the eligible project cost to reduce the risk that we might be found to be noncompliant. That's one area. The other thing is that the EPA staff has emphasized that as they go through the loan program, oftentimes applicants don't include contingencies in their estimate project cost, and the EPA will, in fact, cover contingencies. So I think that both of those elements might have increased the total loan amount. Interesting fun fact is that in this, what we call the NOFA, this round, TBWD had, or the partnership, including City Hillsborough, the WWSS, had the largest loan package at $617 million. The second largest below us was $400 and something, I can't remember the number off the top of my head.
It was like $424, and it was for a water project in California.
Yes.
I noticed that.
Yeah. And that our loan took 13% of the total loans nationwide, so it was pretty satisfying.
I want to congratulate staff again. I think you just are all to be commended so highly, not only for finding and researching this program, but for putting in the extra work to make it happen. My thanks.
Thank you. Again, just a reminder to stick around after the meeting tonight for a few minutes for taping a special message. And with that, if there are no other questions, that concludes the CEO and management staff report this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We will move into Commissioner Communications, reports of meetings attended. So I will start on my left with Commissioner Dome.
Well, let's see. On 10/29, I attended the WIF meeting, and that's the Willamette Intake Facilities. We have partners there where we're stabilizing the existing intake facility. On October 30, I attended the ribbon cutting for the 124th Avenue, which coincidentally has one of our first sections installed of the pipeline to bring the water from the Willamette to us. I met with Mark on November 1st. We had a work session on November 6th, if I can read my writing. We had a work session on November 6th, if I can read my writing. There's the regular meeting tonight, and I had the Lower Business Association meeting on November 8th.
Thank you. Moving to Commissioner Duggan.
Light month to report. On October 30th, I also attended the 124th Water Line and Road Dedication Ceremony. I missed the board work session early this month, because I was celebrating my 22nd wedding anniversary with the trip to the coast, and then tonight's meeting. That's all I have to report.
Congratulations on that milestone.
Thank you.
I also attended the October 30th ribbon cutting of the 124th Pipeline Project. That was really a fun event, and a beautiful example of how projects like that are supposed to work, with the agencies all cooperating and making a more efficient project out of the whole thing. It was very satisfying. On the 6th, I attended the work session where we got a budget update and a master plan update. On the 13th, I had a meeting with the Vice President of the Board and the CEO to do agenda planning. On the 14th, I attended consultant interviews for the CEO recruitment process. And on the 28th, I attend, tonight, I attended the Finance Committee meeting earlier, and then, of course, tonight's board meeting. Moving to Commissioner Schmidt.
Okay, I also attended the 124th ribbon cutting, and you know what that was about. And on the 6th, the work session, the master plan update and budget. And on the 9th, I attended the Joint Water Commission, where the concrete issue that has came up was discussed at some length. And on the 13th, I had a meeting with Mark and Bernice over this board agenda. And on the 26th, I attended the Washington County Forum, which the Oregon League of Women Voters discussed how to redo the districting maps, so gerrymandering isn't such an issue. And tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Moving to Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you. I only have two items, and that is the November 6th work session, and tonight's November 28th. I missed the October ribbon cutting, but Andrea brought me some M&Ms, so I felt like I was there.
Thank you. Do we have any topics to be raised by the commissioners? Seeing none, we move to public comment. Public comment, time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they're presented. Do we have any persons here that would like to comment? Seeing none, I will move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items that do not require discussion. And tonight, we have four items on the consent agenda. Item A, approve the October 24th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Item B, approve the November 6th, 2018 work session minutes. Item C, adopt resolution number 27-18, adopting district initiatives for the 2019-21 biennium. And lastly, item D, adopt resolution 28-18, recognizing Oregon congressional delegates for their support of the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act, that very WIFIA we've been talking about. So, do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving to the business agenda. The first item is consider accepting the report of the independent auditor and the district's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal years ended June 30th, fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018 and 17. Staff report from Mr. Paul Matthews.
Thank you, President Burke, Commissioners. I'm going to introduce here Keith Simovic. What did I say? Did I say Burke?
You said President Burke.
I'm sorry, President Bagnall. Wow, old habits die hard. Excuse me for that. Keith Simovic is here from Moss Adams, who is our independent auditor. He's going to give a report on the results of the district's audit. But before we get to that, I just want to highlight a couple of things. You should have received a few handouts here tonight. The packet that you received had a draft copy of the CAFER, but because we were still waiting for the audit from the Joint Water Commission and the Barney to be issued, we weren't able to actually get, Moss Adams wasn't able to actually issue our audit yet. So what you have handed out to you should be two letters. If you look at the bottom of one, it'll be page 13 on the backside, page 14, that actually can be inserted, page 13, 14, in the CAFER that was in your board packet, and the others on page 97. Those are two things that would go inside the conference annual financial report, so you have a whole package. The other thing that you should have received is a letter communications with those charged with governance, which is part of Moss Adams' professional responsibilities to deliver those to you. Want to take just a minute to talk about the audit itself and why this is important to the district. This is part of our accountability. We have the luxury in the finance department actually to have an independent auditor come in and look over the work that we do. They identify things that we can do better, and each year we use that as an opportunity to improve our processes. You might remember last year, they found an error in the way that we were forecasting our accrual on revenues. We took that, based, found what had caused the problem, worked to remedy that. Happy to say that we finally, that we have a resolution to that problem, and it's made us better each step of the way. So we look forward, actually, to our audit as a way to have our work double-checked and to make sure that we're doing everything in the interest of our ratepayers. I also want to recognize Rena Byrne, who's here tonight. Rena's back here. She is the brain that has put together and the work that put together our audit tonight, and without her, we just could not be here. So thank you, Rena. And with that, Keith, turn it over to you, so you can make your report to the board. Thank you.
There we go. Well, I was just going to say, everyone take a big sigh of relief, because the good news is, the audit is completed, which, and I think this may be the earliest that I've presented to the board, maybe in the past a few times in November for the November board meeting, but I think in general, the financial statements were in draft form. And at this point, I can come before you and say, the audit is done, we've provided all of our final deliverables, and we're completely done with the audit at this point. So very happy to be here at this point. I can definitely tell that I'm not here at a different board meeting, because I don't see any Christmas ties in the crowd, so definitely here a little bit earlier, which is definitely good to have this done and behind everyone. We have a lot of good news and results to provide to you tonight. And on behalf of Moss Adams, just want to thank you to the board for having us here and for continuing to engage us as your independent auditor. I've been involved with the audit engagement for a number of years, and, you know, it continues to be a very good audit to be a part of, from our standpoint, from what we see, because management and the whole team here at TVWD, because it really is a team effort from the entire district, you know, everyone takes the audit very seriously. And you can tell that by their preparedness, and when we arrive on site, everything that we've asked for is ready for us, everyone makes themselves very open and transparent, and they're very responsive. So it makes for a very efficient audit process. But also, in some of Paul's comments too, I mean, you look at any type of finding that we've had, or recommendations that we've had, it feels very good to come back here in a subsequent year and say, you know, we've been able to look at what management's done, the steps that they've taken, and they've been able to address those items. So whenever we've noted things in the past, they've always been really quick at addressing those items. So I think even last year, the item that Paul noted, which I'll mention a little bit later on too, but even when we noted that last year to the board, that management was already working on making changes and addressing those items. So I think that's very good for the board to know, that they take those recommendations to heart, and they make changes quickly to prevent future issues. So I think that's very, very important. So tonight, there's two items that I'll be talking about in terms of our final audit deliverables. One is our audit opinions within the comprehensive annual financial report that Paul mentioned, or the CAFER. And then also is our communication to those charged with governance, it's a separate letter that we issue as part of every audit, current professional audit standards require us to do that. Whether we have issues to discuss in there or not, there's a number of items that we know, whether we ran into any difficulties or issues or adjustments and things like that. So we'll go over that briefly as well. So the first item within the CAFER report is going to be our audit opinion on the financial statements. And through all of the testing that we've done, and the information that we've gathered, and the invoices that we've looked at, and agreements, and contracts, and journal entries, all the various procedures that we go through, we're able to gather enough audit evidence to be able to give an opinion on the financial statements, to say that they're free of material misstatement, whether due to error or fraud, and they're reported in accordance with governmental accounting standards. That's a long way of saying, it's a clean audit opinion, unmodified audit opinion in auditor speak, and that's exactly what you're looking for. But again, I don't want the board to gloss over that, because there's a lot of work that goes into that process, not just when we're on site and we're asking for things, it's throughout the year. There is a tremendous amount of work to set all the procedures in play, and the internal controls, and the checks and balances, to be able to get to this point. So, you know, hats off to everyone here that's had their hand in that, because it's definitely a lot of work.
I note with interest that you have changed that language to clean and unmodified-
Yes.
-from unqualified.
Yes, and you know what-
That used to really bother some people.
Yes, well, the audit standards setters needed something to do, so they came out and they said, "Let's go from unqualified to unmodified," and we said, "Okay." But it's still a clean opinion, it means the same thing. The other opinion that, or audit report that you'll find in the financial statements, kind of towards the back of the financial statements, is our report on compliance with Oregon minimum standards, or Oregon audit standards. Because you're an Oregon municipal corporation, there's additional audit steps that we have to go through, compliance steps that we have to test per state statute. And so the most significant one that you'll see on there, that we spend the bulk of our time on, is, or two of them really, is your budgeting process, local budget law, as well as your public contracting processes. So we're going through, and we're pulling samples, and we're looking at documentation to make sure you're following all the state guidelines, and if there are any findings that we would report them within that separate Oregon audit standards report that's in your CAFER. And if you take a look at that, you'll see that we didn't have any compliance findings in the current year, and also no internal control items to note in that report as well. I think last year, we did have one because of the item that Paul mentioned earlier. So very, very clean, it's exactly what you're looking for, and from a compliance standpoint, again, very clean and no findings there. So definitely good news. The other letter that I alluded to earlier was our communication to those charged with governance. I'm not going to go through everything in there, just highlight a few items to note. First off, we always kind of reemphasize that, you know, that CAFER report is drafted by management. It's not something that we draft, and the numbers in there aren't anything that we're coming up with. We're engaged to come in and give an independent opinion on those figures, whether they're reported fair and accurately in accordance with the accounting standards. There's a paragraph in there on significant accounting policies, I think that's an important one to take a look at. That's where we would note any changes in how your transactions are accounted for from previous years. You know, we want to note if there's anything that's, one, outside the norm for the industry, or aggressive, trying to put the district in a better light than maybe it really is in. But we also note if there's any new accounting standards that come into play that would change how you're accounting for certain things. And there's two big ones that came into play this year that you've adopted, or that the district's adopted in its CAFER report. One has to do with leases, that's the new GASB standard, GASB 87, that basically took away the concept of operating leases, where you're expensing payments as you make them, and instead having you take more of an approach of a capital lease, where you're putting an asset and a liability on the books for the full amount of your cash outlays discounted back to today. So you have a long-term asset and a long-term liability on your books. That's mostly impacted by the new ground lease with City of Wilsonville. So you'll see numbers on there for a liability and a lease asset as well. So that's a new accounting policy change, and you'll see footnotes related to that as well. You'll also see a new standard that came into play related to other post-employment benefits. This was a new GASB standard that required a different type of accounting for that liability. In the past, it'd been more of a short-term kind of focus on what that liability looked like, what you're actuarially required to pay in the coming year to fund those, and now it's more of a long-term liability, looking at what's the total projected liability for, based on everyone that's in the plan, and projected benefits and everything, and putting that actually on your financial statements. The unfunded actuarial liability, basically, is going on your face of your financial statements versus in the footnotes where it'd been in the past. So there's going to be some disclosure related to that as well, and some new footnotes that talk about how that's accounted for, so you'll see that in there. So those are two big new changes that are reflected in your financial report this year that weren't there in previous years. So good one to take a look at. We also note in that letter if there were any audit adjustments that we proposed or were recorded to the financial statements in order for us to give a clean opinion. Good news is, through all the testing that we did, we didn't find anything that we would consider to be material errors that would require adjustment to give a clean opinion. So you know when you come on site and you've got that kind of results, that management's been going through a good process throughout the year in terms of checks and balances, internal controls, to make sure that they've basically been doing an internal audit all throughout the year, to make sure everything's reconciled, transactions are approved, and they're reported correctly in your CAFER report. So very, very good news there. And then finally, in that letter, you'll see a section on internal control-related matters. So this is where we note anything that we believe we're obligated to report to the board. One item, again, that was reported last year, that rose to the level of a material weakness, was the adjustment and related internal control deficiency related to how you recorded unbilled revenue. And because of that error, we had some recommendations to change controls to address that going forward. As a result, coming in this year, again, as I mentioned, going through that process, doing our testing, looking at the controls there, I mean, we were on-site doing our internal control testing, and we could see management going through this process of having additional eyes on that, those reports and calculations to book that entry, and we could see various individuals involved in that process, and additional controls put into place to address that. So very good news there, there is no material weakness reported this year. So that has been addressed, and we've basically closed the loop on that in that letter, and, you know, going forward, it won't be something that's mentioned in the letter. So very, very good news there. One new item that's noted in there that you'll see, doesn't rise to the level of what we would call a material weakness or a significant deficiency, lower on the totem pole in terms of severity, more of a other matters, best practice-type recommendation, but you'll see something in there related to user access and individuals that can post journal entries. So we noted as we were going through, doing our testing, looking at journal entries, we noted a couple individuals that had access to post-journal entries that after we had gone back and discussed with management, shouldn't have had access. And so our recommendation in there is focused on really pulling periodic reports of who has access to the general ledger to post-journal entries, and looking at that periodically, and making sure that the folks that have access are appropriate and in line with management's expectations. So that's one new item that we noted in the current year. No additional items came to note throughout the audit. So overall, again, very, very good news, very clean, and again, great that management's been able to address the recommendations that we had in previous years. So with that, and I'm happy to entertain any questions, but I think that concludes everything that we had to communicate as far as the audit process.
Are there questions from the board? Do I have a motion and a second to accept the report of the independent auditor and the district's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal years ended June 30, 2018 and 2017?
Aye, so, approve? Yeah.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. And thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Consider adopting resolution number 29-18, a resolution adopting 2017-19 supplemental budget actions for the Willamette Intake Facilities Fund, the Willamette River Water Coalition Fund, and the General Fund. And we'll have a staff report from Todd Burton.
Thank you, President Bagnall.
Oh, and I have one more little bit of explanation I need to give to our viewing audience, whoever they may be. The way this process works is that first, we will hear the staff report, and then I will open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to offer testimony in support or opposition to the item will be given five minutes unless an extension is granted by the board. Should three or more people testify on the same topic, each person would be limited to three minutes. And then following public testimony, I will close the hearing, and the board will consider action on the item. So that's the process.
Great, now I get to say thank you, President Bagnall, again, to make sure I get the name correct. And Commissioners, good evening. Todd Burton with the district staff, and serving as the district budget officer. Tonight's presentation, I will call an unmodified presentation relative to the materials that we presented to you at the work session on November the 6th, in terms of supplemental budget. The district adopts a two-year biannual budget, and from- The district adopts a two-year biannual budget and from time to time, it becomes necessary to propose adjustments to those budget, to those budgets. And Oregon local budget law has a process in which we can do that. All of that is contained in the resolution before you tonight, Resolution 29-18. One of the numbers for the budget adjustment is over $2.4 million, but I do want to just qualify that most of the resources are, the tech, these are mostly technical adjustments and the substantial change to one of the funds is our resources that have already been budgeted in the district's budget as adopted by the board. We're just putting it into another bucket or a new fund to reflect the joint venture that the district is involved with. So briefly, I'll talk about the three funds that are affected. Two of them are joint ventures, the Willamette Intake Facilities Commission, as well as the Willamette River Water Coalition. And then finally, the General Fund, a adjustment that the staff is recommending to what we call special payments. These are basically pass-through revenues that the district is collecting on behalf of entities, cities that collect right-of-way fees from customers who are district customers but reside within the corporate boundaries of the, the cities. They, they assess an additional fee and we collect that through our rates and we pass that through to the, to the, to the cities. First is the Willamette Intakes Facility Commission. Commissioner Doan is the primary representative for the, representing TBWD on the commission. Commissioner Schmidt is the alternate. In February of 2018, the board adopted the Willamette Intake Facilities Commission, intergovernmental agreement, or what we call the WIF. TBWD is a member with five partner cities. It is governed by a six-member governing board and TBWD serves as a, serves as the managing agency of this joint venture. In March of 2018, the Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 09-18, which established a new fund for the district within the 2017-19 budget, which we fondly call, fondly call the WIF or Willamette Intake Facilities Fund. At that time, the board approved expenditure appropriation of $109,000 to cede the WIF work. Those are materials and services expenses. The resources that are paid, that pay for those are share, cost shares by the WIF partners. At that time, when we adopted, when the board adopted Resolution 09-18, staff informed the board that we may come back again during this biennium to request additional appropriation for capital outlay, particularly for improvements of the primary WIF function, which are improvements to the raw water facilities at the intake facilities at the Willamette River Water Treatment Plant. On October 29th of, of last month, the WIF commission met and approved a expenditure plan of capital outlay expenditures of $2.47 million. That was adopted by the WIF commission. And simply our action tonight that's proposed to the board is to reflect that level of expenditures in the district's Willamette Intake Facilities Fund.
Excuse me, I believe that was 2018, not 2019.
Did I say 2019? I'm jumping ahead a little bit? Excuse me. It is, and I have a, I have a typo on my, typo on my, pardon my typo. Paul, we missed that. Anyway, my, my apologies.
Very forward-looking.
Yes, we're very forward-looking, looking forward to whiffy. The second item in, in the resolution affects the Willamette River Water Coalition Fund. Again, this is another partnership fund that, partnership that the TBWD serves as the managing agency among four partner agencies. TBWD's adopted 2019 budget, 17-19 budget includes, included WIF, WRWC appropriations of $86,000. However, on an annual basis, the WIF members, and that would include at that time, would have been Commissioner Richard Burke as a primary member, now being represented by Commissioner Todd Sanders, approved a work plan that, with appropriations, that it slightly exceeded what the district had in its adopted 2017-19 budget. So to comply with the requirements of the WRWC governing board, we are again proposing a minor adjustment to the district's fund that's holding these resources and expenditures. TBWD's role in the WIF and the WRWC are very similar. As members, we pay dues. We participate as, in their governance. And as the managing agency, we execute projects and programs on behalf of both joint ventures. In addition, we also manage the financial affairs of the district. We adopt and manage a budget within the district's budget structure in compliance with Oregon budget law. And we provide financial accounting and, accounting and, and reporting services. In the case of the Willamette Intake Facilities Fund, we do a, a full-blown audit, not unlike what we just heard from Moss Adams. For the WRWC, since it's a much smaller fund and less than $500,000 in annual expenditures, we do what's called a financial review. That's it. Finally, the third item, subject item in the supplemental budget action is increase to the right-of-way fees, the appropriation for passing through these resources to the cities of Beaverton, Hillsborough and Tigard. All three entities began collecting these fees, excuse me, these fees during fiscal 17. This slide shows the level of, of the fees for, right-of-way fees that are each agency assesses, ranging from 3.5% to 5.2, to 6%. TBWD's role is quite simple. We collect these fees through our utility billing system and we remit them to the cities. Right-of-way fees in the General Fund are appropriated as a special payment, which is a term used in the, in local budget law, which really just signifies pass-through expenses from one agency to another. Due to the very strong water sales that we've had during the, the course of this current biennium, we're projecting we may fall a little short in the appropriation authority for right-of-way fees. We, the board adopted a special payment in the amount of $1.56 million and we expect to exceed that amount by $125,000 to $150,000, depending on the pace of water sales for the rest of the biennium. As mentioned at the beginning, Oregon local budget law allows a governing body to amend or change their budget during a budgetary period. It is governed by statute. Couple of requirements that we must have compliance with. One is that the resources and the requirements must be balanced when approving a supplemental budget. If we are affecting a fund by more than 10% of the original appropriation of the funds, 10% of the original appropriation amount, or if we're creating a new appropriation category, the board must hold a public hearing in addition to considering this, considering adoption of a supplemental budget. Two of the three items before you do exceed the 10% threshold, both the WIF and the WRWC funds, the appropriation increase exceeds 10%. And in addition, the WIF fund, we are asking the board to create a new appropriation category for capital outlay. One of the requirements for adopting a supplemental budget is appropriate public notice. On November 21st, the, we published a notice of the public hearing for tonight's action, noting the date, time and place of the, of the public hearing, as well as some of the details of the supplemental budget action. To summarize the objectives that are in Resolution 29-18 for each of the, each, each of the three funds, the Willamette Intake Facilities Fund, which is Fund 44 in our budget structure, would create an appropriation category for capital outlay. It would appropriate additional expenditures of a little over $2.4 million. This is the amount that was approved by the WIF commission in October of 2018. And it would recognize the payments from partners to support those capital outlay expenditures based on the terms of the IGA. For the Willamette Water River Coalition Fund, we're requesting an additional appropriation of $34,600 in materials and services. And this is principally to fund some additional studies that the Willamette WRWC governing body approved. I'll go through a little bit of math in a second. We, the, the budget for the WRWC was slightly higher, but because we had some savings in the first year of our biennium, we don't need the full amount of their approved budget for the, for fiscal 2019. And finally, for the General Fund, the rights-of-way fees, we're requesting appropriation of $200,000 for special payments. Those would fully be recognized by the fees paid by customers. It would have no impact on the district's financial obligations or operations. So this is really, the, the next few slides just show the budget detail with the numbers. This is in, in the resolution itself. The showing that both for the Fund 44, the Willamette Intake Facilities Fund, contributions by partners and an equal amount of contribute, requirements or expenditures in, for capital outlay. Again, for raw water facility improvements at the Willamette River Treatment Plant, that share of those improvements that belong to the WIF partnership. This slide shows the cost shares for the, for this particular request for expenditure and capital outlay. The city of Hillsborough, as well as the district, sharing about 70% of those costs. The second item for the WRWC, again, this is additional resources for work that the WRWC governing body approved in their fiscal 19 budget, a request of $34,600. And again, an equal amount of resources coming in from those members, including the district. We are not proposing additional, the district's share is on the two slides. I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself. The, the math really is a little very simple. We had, the district approved a budget of $86,000. We spent in the first year about $29,600. The WRWC approved a second year of spending plan of $91,000. With the remaining available appropriation to meet the $91,000, we're asking for $34,600. This shows the cost shares of the, for the Willamette River Water Coalition among its four partners, the district being the largest partner at 66%. We pay dues for our participation in the WRWC in the admin budget through regional partnerships. We have a significant amount, we have sufficient savings in which we do not need to ask the board to adopt additional resources for the General Fund to pay this relatively small share of additional dues for the WRWC. And finally, the supplemental budget request for the right-of-way special payments in the General Fund, again, increase, the proposal to increase special payments by $200,000. All of those resources would come from what right-of-way fees paid by customers who reside in the districts, excuse me, in the cities that, that assess the fee, that are district customers. It's a conservative estimate. We just don't want to come back to the board for another supplemental budget, so we aimed a little high on that appropriation request. So the staff recommendation is a request to approve Resolution 29-8-18, adopting a 2017-19 supplemental budget, budget actions for the Willamette Intake Facilities Fund, the Willamette River Water Coalition Fund and the General Fund. That's the end of my remarks. I'm happy to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, I'm opening the public hearing on Item 3A. Is there any testimony in support? Any testimony in opposition? In that case, the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 29-18, a resolution adopting 2017-19 supplemental budget actions for the Willamette Intake Facilities Fund, the Willamette River Coalition Fund and the General Fund?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And with that, we are adjourned.